2020 Meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. This is Julie Jacobson, Town Manager. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public may join the meeting remotely by telephone at 1408-650-3123, access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. As we have two continued public hearings, the public may provide comment during those hearings. All materials for tonight's meeting are available to view on the town's website at auburnguide.com. Look under the Board of Selectmen's webpage, under Remote Meeting Documents, and you'll find everything there under today's date. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television, and also note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote per the new law regarding remote participation. Before we go to the first agenda item, I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative, so you might have to unmute to respond and then mute again. So, Doreen Goodrich.
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Dan Carpenter.
I'm here.
Lionel Berthium.
Yes.
Assistant Town Manager, CFO, Ed Casanovic. Administrative Assistant Sharon Kwiatkowski.
Present.
I see Town Clerk Deb Grimo.
Present.
Our guru for solid waste and recycling, Amy Sullivan.
I'm here.
And Steve Susie, the National Grid representative who's here for the two hearings. Great, I do see Steve.
Yes, you can hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. Okay, so...
Excuse me, I see we have a caller four here. If we could just, I can send their caller.
Hi, Chet Stensel.
Hi, Chet, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for logging in. All right, so the first item on tonight's agenda is the annual reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. Following this item, I will gladly turn the meeting over to the newly-elected Chair, but until such time, this responsibility does fall under me, as it does every year. So, I'll now open the nominations for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And why don't I start with nominations? And I see...
Julie, this is Lionel.
Lionel, yes.
I would like to nominate Doreen Goodrich for Chair of this session's Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Actually, what I should say is, are there any, is, do we have a second on the nomination for Doreen Goodrich for Chair? Not hearing a second? Do we have any other nominations for Chair?
I have a nomination.
Mrs. Goodrich.
I nominate and move that Dan Carpenter be elected Chair of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen to preside over the board meetings from now until a date within seven days after a special election, to fill the currently existing two vacancies on the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, per Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 10, whether both are filled or not. When at such time the Selectmen shall meet, discharge the Chair and elect a member to serve as Chairperson for the remainder of the board session.
Thank you. Do I have a second for Mr. Carpenter for Chair?
Julie, I'll second that. This is Lionel.
Thank you, Lionel. We have a second. Are there any additional nominations for Chair? And hearing or seeing none, the nominations are now closed. So, we have a nomination and a second for Mr. Carpenter for Chair. We'll now take a roll call vote for Mr. Carpenter for Chair until the special election, until the remaining two vacant Board of Selectmen seats, per the motion that Mrs. Goodrich just read, which I believe is seven days after the special election to reorganize. So, this is a roll call vote. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Great. Congratulations, Mr. Carpenter, and now, Mr. Chairman. I now turn the remainder of the meeting over to you to conduct the nominations and selection for the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Doreen Goodrich as Vice Chair.
Is it permissible for the Chair to second the nomination?
I believe you can, yes, when there's, especially when there's a three-member board.
And I would second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take a roll call vote, then, for the Vice Chair?
Yes. Mrs. Goodrich? Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. We do have two continued, two public hearings that we continued from last meeting. The first is, they're both from National Grid, Item 3A. This is to install a new riser and spare sweep, conduits and wires from Pole 3, and there's further detail. Is there a motion to reopen the hearing?
Moved.
Here a second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, actually, I'm sorry, we have roll call. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The meeting is reopened. The Chair will recognize Mr. Susie for a brief overview. I know there was a question on notification last time board members did receive an email from the Town Manager stating that this was simply a difference in mailing address, so the person at 14 Church Street was notified. So there was no failure to notify any of the abutters. Mr. Susie, if you'd like to continue.
Yes, just to go over the two petitions. We are going to relocate existing Pole 3 approximately five feet in a northwest direction to make way for a new pipe that will be going to the Marystone School Apartments, and then we will be installing a riser sweep and underground conduits from Pole 3 approximately 60 feet or so from the pub before crossing private property to Church Street to feed a new transformer that will serve the...
Okay. So, we're on the first petition, which involves installing the riser, the spare sweep, the conduits and wires. Are there any board members questions on this petition?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
I just wanted to comment that I thanked the Town Manager for getting that information. It was a little confusing with that number 14, so thank you for the clarification. Ready to move forward.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this petition? I know we had several members of the public, abutters, who spoke at the last meeting, but if anyone has any, this is on the first petition. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Is there a motion on the petition?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the petition as stated in Agenda Item 3A.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. By roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is unanimous and approved. We move on to our second public hearing, also National Grid. This is to relocate one JO pole on Church Street approximately 310 feet, and there's more verbiage, but that's just an idea of the petition. Is there a motion to reopen the hearing?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
By roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. The meeting is reopened. Mr. Susie did give us a brief overview into the other petition. Do board members have any questions, any further questions for Mr. Susie on this petition?
Through the Chair, Mr. Susie. So, the way I'm reading is the Pole 4, is that, that's going to be underground over to the P4-1? Or is that above wire?
That's the current, which we, you can hear me? The existing wire from Pole 4 to 4-1, that is going to be removed.
Okay, that's going to be removed.
Hope everyone can hear me.
Okay.
So, be replaced by...
Yes.
Then, the underground wires.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Susie? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll try to hear. Hopefully, you can hear me better. Now, the existing overhead wires from Pole 4 to 4-1, those are going to be removed, and Pole 4-1 will be removed.
Mr. Berthium, you're all set?
Yes, so then, the, from the previous petition, that Pole 3-1 or the underground there, that's going to feed that whole building then, from that transformer?
Yes, yeah, that will be the new, I see how the new building is serviced to the transformer on Pad 3-1.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Susie.
Is there any abutters or residents who'd like to speak on this petition? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Is there a second? By roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. It is, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion on the petition?
I'll make a motion to accept the petition as it reads on Agenda Item 3-P.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. You have a good night.
You too.
Moving on to Board of Selectmen Items 5A. These are recommendations of town meeting articles that the board did not act on at our last meeting. They are Articles 2, 22, and 23. The number 2 is to set the salary of elected officials. 22 is to cap at $2,000 a stipend for town clerks who also serve on the Board of Registars. And 23 is a matter for town meeting, a procedural matter for town meeting, and dealing with two-thirds votes and the number of members who would need to petition the moderator for that. Are there any questions from board members? Hearing none. Is there anything from the town clerk or the town moderator?
No.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, okay. I was just asking if there was any, anything, any comments from the town clerk or the town moderator. I know 2 and 22, Mrs. Grimo, relate in some fashion to your position, and 23 is a town meeting article, I believe the moderator is on for, for any questions. Just giving you an opportunity in case you wanted to say anything on either of those items.
No, if you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Is there a motion on Article 2?
I'll make a motion to recommend...
Okay, there's a motion to recommend. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, we're under discussion. Mrs. Goodrich?
So, through the Chair, this is to set the salaries of whom?
I would, this is elected official...
Elected, just...
Moderator and the town clerk, yes.
And Board of Selectmen.
No one else gets a stipend who's elected currently.
So, under discussion, I just, I just would prefer to, to not take a position on setting the Board of Selectmen's salary. I know that that hasn't gone up at all in years, but I would prefer not to take a position on this.
Okay.
I would support that.
Okay, so, Mr. Berthium, are you withdrawing your motion to recommend?
I'll go ahead and change my motion to not take action.
That usually means, hold, that usually means if we take no action, we're taking some action at town meeting. Do you want to defer to the petitioner?
We can do that.
Essentially means what you're saying.
Okay, so, defer to, I'll make a motion to defer to the petitioner, though.
Okay, so you're commending your motion to, to change it to defer to the petitioner. Are you comfortable seconding that motion, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Is there, well, there's no further discussion. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. On Article 22, this is a limitation on a stipend involving the Board of Registars. Mr. Casanovic, do you have anything on this? I know you did speak to it at the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I can say that there is a current stipend being paid to the, to the town clerk for, for role as, as being a registrar, although this lifts the cap to a limit of up to $2,000. I believe the town clerk is currently getting somewhere between $800 and $1,000 annually. This vote would allow a stipend not to exceed $2,000, so I can tell you that we budgeted for the full amount, 2,000, assuming that this article was, we know it was going to be submitted, we just didn't know the outcome, but we just wanted to budget the amount that would allow for a maximum payment.
Okay, thank you. Do board members have questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Goodrich?
So, who sets the salary, if it were to move from the 800 to 1,000, to a maximum of $2,000? Whose vote is that?
Mrs. Jacobson and Mr. Casanovic?
Well, that's, I think by virtue of it being in the budget, town meeting would vote it. There was never, ever a separate vote for that stipend, so I think town meeting votes for that because it has its own separate appropriation under the election division.
And can I add something? You have to accept the MBL first. Article 22.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything further from board members or town administration?
I just want to, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Of course, Mrs. Goodrich.
I just heard Deb Grimo, town clerk, speak. I just wanted some clarification on what she said. I wasn't clear on what she just said.
Mrs. Grimo, can you provide further clarification?
For the additional compensation, Article 22 will have to be accepted first, to increase that to that limit.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is a one-time vote. This would not require an annual vote of town meeting, correct, Deb? Once adopted, it's adopted perpetually.
Mr. Chairman of the...
Sorry. Mrs. Goodrich?
So, I mean, I'm not opposed to this article, but anyone who knows me knows that I'm concerned about procedure and process, so I'm just wondering how we get from the current to an increase? Would the town clerk put a warranted article on? Would the town clerk, you know, increase it? Would the Board of Registars vote to move the compensation to the $2,000? Again, I'm only asking this procedurally, because if it's a town meeting, then, I'm not sure of our role in this.
I can say, as a, as a former registrar, we never voted on compensation. Board of Registars do get compensation, I believe it's set at $500, and I think the Chair might get slightly more, I can't recall, but we, during my nearly three years, we never voted on any compensation or any town meeting article, but I could be totally off-base. So, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Casanovic, or Mrs. Grimo, do you have any further information you can share on that?
I mean, that wouldn't be a role of the Board of Regis...
Mrs. Grimo.
That would not be something that they would be voting on.
Through the Chair, if I can just try to clarify, and I'm going to turn to the clerk for this. Currently, the town clerk prepares her own budget for her office, which includes her salary. If her salary were to increase at all, and she makes a request to increase it, it has to be done through a vote on Article 2, which the board just discussed. So, in that article, you can see an increase that the town clerk proposed. Likewise, Deb, I'm going to assume that this will be treated the same way. If you want to increase the stipend that you currently receive to a dollar amount of a maximum, you would need the town meeting to vote to accept this article, and then you would put that dollar amount in your budget that you present to town meeting each year, and then town meeting votes it?
Correct. Well, it won't be in Article 2. It will be in the elections budget, so it's not going to be under elect...
So, Mrs. Goodrich, the town clerk would prepare a budget on behalf of the Board of Registars? The stipend appears in that budget? That budget is voted on by town meeting?
It appears under the, if you have the warrant in front of you, I'm looking at. It's under the elections budget.
If I could add some clarification to, I think, this one item. I can tell you that...
If you can just, Mr. Casanovic, you can just pause for a moment, because Mrs. Grimo was speaking, so I'm going to give her the floor so that she can, she can continue her thought, please, and then I will recognize you right there.
It's under the elections, under the registrar's salaries, and that includes the additional compensation along with the three Board of Registars, under registrar's salaries.
So, if I could just ask a clarifying question. You're not seeking the 2,000 currently, correct? This is just to adopt this particular Mass General Law?
I get the 2,000.
This particular section to place a cap? At this time, you're not seeking an increase?
That would be...
Go ahead, Mrs. Grimo.
That does include the cap at $2,000 in the budget.
Mr. Chair, as I meant...
Mr. Cas... Hold on, Mr. Berthium. Mr. Casanovic had a question or had a clarification, so I did say I would recognize him next, so I will recognize you after Mr. Casanovic, if that's okay. Mr. Casanovic, you had something?
So, I just wanted to let the other board members know, there are some stipends that are paid annually, one to the chief assessor and one to our town treasurer-collector as a result of certifications that they obtained. Those certifications also required a one-time vote of town meeting. Those stipends are paid annually, they are budgeted annually, and other than town meeting vote, there's no other trigger for those stipends.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Berthium, you had, had something? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm just trying, again, to get clarification, so, so where we, let's assume that we recommend Article 22. Let's assume that town meeting votes to accept Article 22. If they don't accept it, it sounds to me like it's already in the town clerk's budget to be accepted, which is also, I'm assuming, a town meeting article, so does 22 have to come before a different town meeting article? If, because if it doesn't get accepted, then they can't really accept the $2,000 that she's put into her, her budget. Am I saying that correctly?
That sounds correct to me, but I'll ask the Town Manager for clarification, just because it seems like we're, we could use some... Mrs. Jacobson?
If I may, I'm just going to refer this question to the CFO, because he's looking right now at the budget, so I think he can give you the details.
Okay. Mr. Casanovic?
So, like Article 2, it sets the salary of the town clerk. If by chance, that sets the salary for the town clerk, Article 2. If Article 2 does not get approved, even though her budget includes the same amount of money as proposed under Article 2, the appropriation is not controlling, the article is controlling. So, in this case, if her budget gets approved, that includes the $2,000, and Article 22 does not pass, she currently gets the amount she's getting now, either 800 or $1,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. So, so I absolutely recognize the hard work that our town clerk does. I recognize the work that she does in, you know, in conjunction with the Board of Registars. My concern is that we are an elected body, and it is my preference that we steer clear of issues that fall under the purview of the Town Clerk's Office Elections Division, and therefore, I would make a motion that we defer to the petitioner on this article.
Okay, there's a motion to defer to the petitioner. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is unanimous. We are on our last item, Item 23. This is a Town Meeting item that involves matters that are, require a two-thirds vote, and this is something to do with questioning the, or calling for a manual vote, if I understand the article correctly. Is that correct, Mr. Moderator? This is to deal with-
Would you repeat that, Mr. Kotmeto?
Sure. This is to deal with articles solely that require a two-thirds vote.
Right.
This, you're asking for an amendment to the general bylaw to have seven members, seven or more members ask for a manual vote, is that correct?
That's correct.
Otherwise, it will stand at the discretion of the Chair. Okay.
What happens? What happens is that I'm going to have company of opposed, and if less than seven are opposed, I can declare it a two-thirds vote. If seven or more are opposed, then we have to take account. That's all.
Okay. Are there any board member comments or questions? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. So I've, you know, certainly attended plenty of Town Meetings as a Town Meeting member as well as a member of the Board of Selectmen. And while I personally fully support this article, I would prefer, again, that this falls under the purview of the Town Meeting and that, and this is their rules and regulations, I would prefer that we take more position and allow the Town Meeting members to debate this on the Town Meeting floor. Again, personally, I support this, but I would make a motion that we take no, that we defer to the petitioner.
Okay, there's a motion to defer to the petitioner on Article 23. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Okay. Thank you. All right, we are now on gift acceptances. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, could I make up a motion to move up Agenda Item 6A, Town Manager Items, the recycling grant?
Okay, there is a motion to move up Item 6A. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. We are on Item 6A, a vote to authorize and expend the annual recycling grant. Mrs. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we are discussing the recyclable grant that the town has been fortunate enough to apply for each year. There is a sheet in your package, an information sheet, and it has all of the information on this particular grant, but I'd like to turn it over to Amy Sullivan to explain to you how this grant works and a little bit about what we use the funds for and how the system works for what we can most likely qualify to get for reimbursement from the state. So Amy, thanks so much for participating.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. So it is time again to apply for the annual SMRP grant. It stands for Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. The town earns points for its efforts to reduce solid waste by reuse, recycling, and composting. So everything Colleen Hines and Darlene Coyle and Eileen have been doing over the past year, the education and outreach, social media posts, all this, all of these efforts count. And we should be eligible for a new point this year for composting. Residents can purchase backyard compost bins from the Board of Health for only $25. We're subsidizing the cost of the bins with previous year's grant money. So by using the grant money to lower the cost, it gives us another point towards this year's grant, so that's pretty good. And information on how to compost is up on the website if anyone's interested. Under the trash recycling page, there's a lot of information on composting, so it's very easy. Take your food scraps, mix them in with dirt and leaves, and you get really nice soil to use for your garden. So we just need the Selectmen's approval to apply for the grant, and we should get, it's a higher number this year, we should be eligible for $13,200 this year.
Nice.
And then all goes back into the recycling and solid waste reduction program.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank Amy Sullivan again for her hard work and support for this program on behalf of the Town of Auburn. She just does a tremendous job, and along with our Eileen and Darlene and the Department of Public Health, they're managing a very challenging program. So want to thank Amy for all the time and effort she's put into this, and especially for the grant assistance. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Are there any board questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. I too would like to congratulate Amy. I know that recycling has become very difficult and the challenges of the, you know, a strong recycling program because of the changes, but I thank you for your continued efforts, and I fully support and appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to authorize, accept, and expend the annual recycling grant with the Mass DEP.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan, for joining us and for your hard work.
All right, thank you.
And thank you to the Town Manager. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Good night. Good night.
May I have a motion to move up item, Board of Selectmen, Item 5G, Special Election Discussion? I see the Town Clerk is still with us, so.
So I'll move-
We have a motion? Is there a second? All right, any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. We are on Item 5G. A discussion on the potential and potential vote of a special town election to fill now two vacancies on the Board of Selectmen, one due to the resignation of Mr. Holstrom as he moved out of town on May 1st, and we had a failure to elect on May the 19th. I'm going to turn this over to the Town Clerk for any comments she may have. Mrs. Greymo?
Hi. As far as having a special election, if you were going to vote, I mean, I have some dates if you wanted to consider, but you have to have at least 64 days out. So right now, even just looking at, let's just throw out an August 11th, special election, you would have to vote, the last day to vote on that would be on your June 8th meeting. So you have to have the time to prepare and have that out there. So if you have any questions, you know, I can answer for you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Berthew.
So being that there's a national election in November, is there any date that, that we can't go out to? Do we have to have it done within a certain number of days?
Well, it has to be at least 64 days out, so. I don't, I don't know which thinking, you know, due to the COVID, you know, I suspect that's going to be through the remainder of the year. So I would suggest having a special election, not on, you know, a dual election because I'm going to need extra election workers. And I did have a reduced, I had a waiver with reduced workers for the town election, and, you know, I had a, I would not have been able to staff a full election. So even on a regular state election, I would not be able to get a waiver.
Are you good, Mr. Berthew?
Question or not?
Well, I mean, my, I mean, I, I'm hearing your opinion. My question is, is there a not more than date? Does it, you know, it has to be at least-
You take the vote, it has to be at least 64 days. So let's just say you took a vote to have an election, it would, tonight, it would have to be at least 64 days out from when you take the vote. So if you took a vote-
We could vote it on a year from now.
What, a year from now?
Well, my question is, is there a date that we, that we have to have it done by?
No, because you don't even have to have a special election.
Okay. But if we-
Yeah, under the theory to elect, Board of Selectmen may choose to have a special election, may take a vote to call a special election of the vacancies.
Thank you. You're good, Mr. Berthew?
I would just, so I guess my thought was that if we had the two elections on the same day, that would make it easier, and so what I'm hearing from Mrs. Greymo is that basically, it would really make it more difficult for her because she would need more workers in order to do that. So is that, I just want to clarify, that's what I heard from you?
Yes.
Mrs. Greymo?
We would have, we'd have two ballots, we would need extra poll workers for that election.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Greymo, if I can just ask a question. So if we went to a dual election, which I'm just positing for the public who might have questions on this, how would a ballot be handled? Because typically, obviously, we have one machine. Would they be separating those ballots into two separate voting machines, or would it all go into the same voting machine?
I mean, I haven't done a dual election, but I would say that the code would probably be programmed to recognize town ballots and then to recognize the, you know, whatever ballot it had, whatever state ballot it had or federal ballot.
And early voting is not-
At the end of the night, those would all have to be sorted ballots.
Okay.
And federal ballots, at the end of the night of any election, we have to go through all those ballots in addition to, because if there are any write-ins.
Okay, thank you. And early voting is not currently available for this special election, is that correct?
Correct. At this point, there is no early voting scheduled for any election other than the November election.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other board member questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. So I just have, I guess, a couple of comments and a couple of questions. So, so not to disagree with the Chairman, but I just want to clarify that it wasn't a failure to elect. We did elect two candidates. We just had a candidate who, by a decision he made, a failure to qualify for the ballot, but we did elect two candidates. And I am not prepared to vote on a special election tonight. I am, I would like some additional information from the Town Clerk, including the costs associated with calling a special election. The additional cost associated with tying in, I know Mr. Berthew mentioned the November election, but we also have a primary in September. So I would like to get information if those costs would be the same, whether we tied it into a, the primary election in September or the general election in November. And I know that the, you know, due to COVID, things are changing on a daily basis. I mean, I listen to the governor's press conferences daily, and, you know, I, based on listening to that, based on some of the decisions the Town Manager has made on summer programming, I expect that we will be hearing something about early voting for the primary. So again, I know that we added this to the agenda for discussion, which I feel is important because certainly we want the public to know that a candidate, through his own decision, declined to qualify for the seat and therefore, you know, declined the seat, but also want to get additional information on the election. So I am not prepared to vote on this tonight to call a special election, but certainly wanted on the agenda for our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no, thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. I share with you a desire not to set the town, the special election tonight, but I did notice a lot of press accounts, and I did think that it was important that we have a discussion so people, there's a lot of information out there. I've seen some on social media, which is, is not correct, so anything we can do to correct and put good information out is always a positive for, for the meeting. Mr. Berthew, I'm sorry, I think I stepped over you.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, I just wanted to say that, that I agree with that because I would like to get more information on costs that are going to be associated with a special election when we were to do it. So with that in mind, I would make a motion to table the special, the vote on holding a special election to a future meeting. Do I have to specify a particular meeting?
I will, I will turn to the Town Manager and ask on that. I do have another procedural question, just-
Through the Chair, I don't, I'm sorry, through the Chair, I don't believe you have to specify a date for which you're going to table it. I think you can just say table for future discussion, and then we can, we can talk to the Town Clerk and see what works for her schedule as far as getting the information to you in time for, say, your next meeting, which I believe is June 8th, or the meeting after that. I know if you wait too long to have the discussion, as the Town Clerk just said, I believe that you have to take that vote a minimum of 64 days before the election. So the longer you wait, the longer you're putting out the election. But for purposes of holding or tabling an item, I don't believe you need to put a date on that right now. You can just say for a future meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Jacobson. Just on a procedural matter, Mrs. Goodrich asked for what amounted to a report, so I would ask that we include that language in this motion, that we're requesting a report on those items through the Town Manager and as coordinator of this effort, and we would vote on that as well as on the decision to table the item till we take it up again. But I would prefer that we have a clear, that this is a board decision, that we are asking for this information, which I think is the appropriate procedural process if we're asking for information.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion- Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, that the board request information from the town clerk on the costs associated with a special election, the costs associated with having a town election associated with the primary election, and the cost associated with having a town election, special town election, combined with the November general election. I furthermore, that we invite the town clerk to join us at our le- next meeting to have a further discussion on this and potentially vote at the next meeting.
Okay. There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion, there is a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, so we are back on item 5B, which is gift acceptances. We have two gift, we have two gifts, both to the fire account, one from Masterman's in the amount of $200 and one in the amount of $500 from Britton Wallace Funeral Homes. Is there a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept with gratitude.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Being no further discussion, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Um, we are now on item 5D, a vote to designate an individual to file with the Attorney General's Office, a report if necessary is required by Mass General Law 39, Section 10A, Part D. Mrs. Jacobson?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, under, um, un- under the new law that passed that enabled Boards of Selectmen to take votes to postpone a town meeting, which this board did back in April, uh, you postponed or actually moved the town meeting from the original scheduled date of May 5th to the next week's date of June 2nd. Along with that, uh, we are required to just give a brief report to the Attorney General that explains that you've done that. Uh, attached in your packet, you could see what that sample letter would be. And it's basically notifying the Attorney General that the moderator, uh, first of all, that the Board of Selectmen has moved the meeting from May 5th to June 2nd. And then secondly, that the moderator has changed the time of the meeting initially posted for 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So what you're, we're asking for you this evening on the recommendation of Town Council is for the board to vote for someone to just submit this letter to the Attorney General. So that would, um, most likely either be myself or the town clerk. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to do it and submit it, but we do need a vote authorizing me to submit it on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for the town manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
I'm assuming that this is the letter to the Attorney General on page three of our agenda item packet. That's correct.
Yes, it's item 5D, yeah?
Having that confirmation, I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign this letter on behalf of Board of Selectmen.
I'll second-
Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you. Um, we are now on Board of Selectmen item 5E, which is a discussion to honor, uh, former selectman Ken Holstrom. This was, I know we had a brief discussion at the end of last meeting on this item. I had had some conversations prior with the town manager, um, as to, uh, how we would go about honoring, uh, Mr. Holstrom. And I know, um, there's some strong feelings on that. So I'm going to turn it over to the board, um, and ask them what their thoughts are.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Berthium.
Before getting started, uh, I just ask that we just take, uh, 5E and 5F together, um, so that we don't have the same discussion twice.
I'll second that.
Okay. There is a motion, there is a second. All is in favor. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay, so we have 5E and 5F. So we will open them up to board members.
And Mr. Chairman, again, my, um, a couple of thoughts. Uh, one is that, um, being that the reason that they, they moved, uh, is that they're, they're down the Cape and, and don't think they probably want to come back to Auburn during the summer. So I think that we should, uh, definitely try to, uh, plan something for the fall. Um, and try to pick a date that's, you know, obviously, we would check with them, see what's good with them. But also, uh, maybe, uh, do a, a small subcommittee, uh, that would, uh, put together some plans and then bring that back to the board, uh, for, for a full board vote. I don't know what other people think about that.
Okay. We're still on this item. Any, any other thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
I would absolutely agree with, um, Mr. Berthium, but my concern would be more COVID-related. So, um, twofold, COVID-related in having a full complement of the board. So, um, I think the fall is appropriate. Um, I also agree with Mr. Um, Berthium that we might want to have a subcommittee and, um, bring it back to the full board.
Okay. Uh, is, would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
Go ahead, Mrs. Goodrich.
I'll make a motion that we, um, we form a subcommittee of the current three-member board to, um, hold discussions on properly honoring Mr. Kenneth Holstrom and Ms. Ken, Kimberly Holstrom for their longtime service to the town.
I'll second-
Is there a second? There's a motion, there's a second. Um, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Um, are there volunteers to serve on said committee?
I'd be happy to.
I would, okay. I would remind members that we do have a general, uh, obligation to honor town departing or departed town volunteers, usually in the fall as well. So it might be a busy time, but I think it's, I agree with, uh, everything. So Mr. Berthium is willing to serve. Anyone else?
I'm happy. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, so Mrs. Goodrich and Mr. Berthium. Go ahead, Mrs. Goodrich.
No, I just wanted to be recognized.
Go, go right ahead.
All righty, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, um, I thank Mr. Berthium for that and I make a motion that the board appoint Mr. Berthium and myself to, um, bring a subcommittee report back to the, um, three-member board at our, um, earliest convenience. I'm not going to say at the next meeting, but, uh, at a, at a, at a future meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you both. All right. We have extinguished Board of Selectmen items. We are now on to town manager items. We dealt with 6A, so we're now on 6B. Mrs. Jacobson?
Uh, through the chair, thank you very much. So the item is, uh, the Auburn reopening plan. And I just wanted to brief the board, I know I've been keeping you informed, uh, through emails, but I also want to let the public know, Auburn has been, we've been working on our reopening plan for a couple of weeks now, Ed and myself, along with input from all of our department heads. And we had a wrapped plan or, uh, ready to go shortly after the governor made his announcement of the state's reopening plan, which was on March 18th. Uh, we had to pull that plan back and hold off on releasing it because when the governor made his announcement of the state's reopening plan, there were a number of areas which still require, uh, qualif- excuse me, be qualified as well as clarified for municipalities. And that includes what regulations and requirements is that, are any towns going to be, uh, mandated to implement in order to reopen their buildings to the public as well as to reopen their buildings full-time to employees. So we have to comply with both the state reopening plan, we have to comply with Department of Public Health guidelines, and we also have to comply with our insure, insureds, uh, guidelines with regard to the building. So Ed and I have been working quite diligently on this plan. So while the plan is still fluid and still moving, we have some of the major parts in place. What we don't have are some of the dates. So our reopening plan will mirror that of the state and be a four-phased approach because we are held responsible for certain requirements. Again, I, I believe municipalities are going to have to follow the requirements the state issued for office reopenings, which means there's a lot of, uh, both physical and documentation requirements that we're going to have to, to meet. So for the board to know, a couple of the decisions that we had to make and one we announced today is we are canceling our Summer in the Park concert series for this summer and the Independence Day event also for this summer. It was not an easy decision to make. It was, uh, quite honestly, it was a heartfelt decision for all of us to make, but it was a decision we had to make. The, currently, the Center for Disease Control, the CDC, their guidance is to cancel all mass gatherings. And by mass gatherings, they talk about, uh, for example, they said every municipality can set their own, but they use as an example perhaps those of 250 or more. Later in the documentation, they talk about mass gatherings of 50 or more. So the CDC is advising nationwide communities to cancel these events. The state, in their reopening plan, said that these large-scale community events cannot take place until phase four. Ed and I were on a call this afternoon with the state, uh, and, uh, with municipal officials across, across the state, with state officials, and that question came up. And the answer again this afternoon was that they are not envisioning large-scale events like summer concerts, uh, festivals, parades and things like that to take place until phase four. There's a slight possibility phase three would allow it, but it would be under extreme circumstances that may not have any application to a summer concert. So therefore, we had to cancel this. Uh, we, fortunately, we're able to cancel, by canceling now, there's no cost to the town for any of the contractual obligations that we had. If we waited too much longer, we could, uh, potentially have to make payment to some of our vendors or some of our performers. And we may find ourselves in a situation where we have vendors that we're accepting checks from and we would have to return those checks. So we really needed to make the decision. We've been holding off and waiting for more guidance from the state and that guidance was affirmed today that it is highly discouraged to have these events. Uh, as you can imagine, we can't social distance at events like this and you can't really implement face covering. And even if you did, the CDC and the Department of Public Health are saying that mass events are very dangerous to much of the population. And if any of our seniors, which they do, attend these events, we don't want to put them in jeopardy. So we did make that decision today. Uh, we put a notice up on all of our, uh, town website and social media and Auburn Cable TV. I want to just mention a little bit about, uh, many people have asked, at both Ed and I, what is that building out in front of Town Hall? What is, what is that little hut that's out there or shed or? So we, uh, are trying to be creative and find ways to continue to provide services to the public without actually enabling the public come into, to come into the building. Again, because we have not yet had, reaffirmed what those guidelines are going to be for opening our public offices, which they call, uh, public facing facilities. So we're still working with the state on those guidelines. Until then, I will assure you, we've provided all the essential services to the public and to the citizens. We've also provided non-essential services. We have been fully functioning. We're just functioning at a different operational system than we did before. In other words, not allowing people into the building. So that is, uh, what you see outside is a small kiosk and our intent is to use that to provide drive-up services for the public to be able to drop off documents as well as pick up documents for Town Hall so they don't have to come inside the building. So some of the, uh, the thoughts for using it would be, it will, it will be staffed. Uh, we're going to start in phase one of the governor's reopening plan by staffing it on a part-time basis. You know, we are working full-time hours to the public. We're still responding to them during our full-time hours, but for being outside in the kiosk just until phase one is through, we would have someone staffing that part-time. People could drop off plans for the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board. Uh, they could drop off applications for the Board of Selectmen, for legal licenses, for business operations. They can drop off anything to a, a, an employee in that, in that kiosk. They can also pick up documents. And I just want to be clear in this, we're not going to allow cash to be paid at this for security purposes, but if residents or the public want to pay for birth certificates, death certificates, marriage certificates, dog licenses, any, uh, other permits or licenses, they can do so either online or over the phone. And we will make sure that those documents that they've purchased are in the kiosk, ready to give to them. So it's a unique way to provide services to the public from outside the building without having to have the public in. One other, uh, change that we did to the building, and I want to thank the DPW director and his staff for making this happen so quickly. If you come up the handicapped ramp in the back of the building, right near the dropbox that is outside of the back door, there's a staging area where it is handicapped accessible. Anyone can walk or take a wheelchair. And we have installed a small window from that ramp that goes directly into the treasure collector's office. So we will be able to service the public with the public remaining outside at the treasure collector's window. So those people who do prefer to pay in cash or those who have questions for the treasure collector or who like to pay their bill in person, while they can drop it off with a check at the kiosk, they can also talk to someone in the treasure collector's office from this window. So we will be announcing our plan, uh, shortly, I would say definitely this week and the next couple of days, waiting for a little bit more guidance from our insurers as well as the state. And then we will be announcing what the operating hours will be for the kiosk and for the treasure collector's, um, window. So that's just the update. We'll keep the public informed, we'll continue to provide notifications as these plans come into place. But we would also say, these plans need to remain fluid, they need to be flexible because, as Mrs. Goodrich pointed out, almost on a daily basis, we're getting new direction from various departments in the state as well as from the CDC. Uh, it is an emerging and evolving situation and we have to make sure that our reopening plan is also emerging and evolving. So we will change as we need to change, but the basic gist of the plan is in place and ready to go.
You're cutting out Mrs. Jacobson.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the, the plan is, is ready to go will be, uh, uh, other than some of the details that we need to finalize internally, we will at least be announcing the phase one portion of our plan this week. And again, it will involve the kiosk and the treasure collector's window, uh, for servicing the public. And I just want to thank all of our employees because they have continued to service the public and provide all of the programs and services that we usually do, but we've just been doing it remotely to the public. So that is our update. Uh, if the board has any questions, either today or in the future, obviously, please let me know.
Okay. At this time, is there any board member questions or comments?
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I know these are really stressful times, so many people and so many differing opinions on what's going on. But, um, having the opportunity to have attended several of these-
these outdoor concerts, and it's disappointing to so many residents, I'm sure that we won't be holding these, but, you know, I fully support the town manager's decision, especially the expense that could potentially be incurred by the town if we are unable to have these. And I'd much rather see a packed house at Pappas Recreation Complex next year than lose any of our seniors who are so vulnerable to this terrible disease, so I fully support the manager's decision on this.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Hearing none. Town manager, item 6C, reminder of town meeting on June 2nd. Mrs. Jacobson?
Thank you. This is just a reminder to our town meeting members that we do have town meetings scheduled for June 2nd. As we mentioned earlier, the moderator has changed the time to 6 o'clock instead of 7 o'clock. I just want to let you know and thank the moderator for working with us and the town corps and all of those who are involved in this, but we've put a number of measures into place to protect the health and safety of those town meeting members and other participants at town meetings. So this year's town meeting due to COVID-19 will be held outside on the football field at the high school. We have a plan that everybody will be social distanced by a minimum of six feet between people. We also have provided an opportunity, which is a unique way to do this, but an opportunity for those who may not be able to physically get onto the field or are uncomfortable being outside with others, to participate in town meeting from their vehicles. So there will be a special section for those town meeting members who want to park near the field. They'll be able to scream the meeting, the town meeting, through the radio station, through AM 1610, so they can hear everything, as well as the loudspeakers that will be used at that time. So they can participate in the meeting. They will have paddles that they can hold outside of their car window when it's time to vote, and we'll have counters like we always do in the gym, but counters will be in the parking lot and on the field. We really feel that this will keep everybody safe. We're asking everybody to wear masks. If they would like to wear gloves, they may do so. We will have masks and gloves available for anyone coming if they'd like to have them. We also, Ed, myself, and Dr. Brunel, the school superintendent, we normally give presentations at the start of town meeting. Myself and the school superintendent will not be giving any presentations. We have posted them online on our website. We taped them. Mr. Kasnovich also taped his presentation, but he's going to have to give a summary to town meeting because he has to explain the budget. So he'll be giving a brief summary, but we will not be speaking, myself and Dr. Brunel, unless we're asked any questions. Again, we're trying to make this meeting short, make it efficient, and move it along as quickly as we possibly can. So, cutting down on the presentations was one way to accomplish that. We will have copies. Actually, we already sent copies of the presentations in the town meeting after we mailed the warrants the other day. So again, this is, these are all the measures that we put in place to protect our town meeting members and other participants. Excuse me.
Thank you.
We're also asking those who are not town meeting voters, if the public is obviously welcome to come, but we're going to have to limit. If we had too many people, we're going to have to limit, and we will spread them out at the field, but we're asking those who do not vote to watch it, potentially listen to it, or to come and stay at a distance, or we will make sure that you're seated up in the stands. So thank you for the opportunity to remind everybody.
Thank you. It sounds good. And we have a summary of CARES Act for Auburn as well.
This is the last item on our agenda, and I want to, I'll just kind of tee it up and turn it to Ed Kasnovich if he has anything to add to it, but the summary is that the federal CARES Act provided funding to each state across the country, and those states are able to allocate all or a portion of the CARES Act funding to municipalities. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has chosen to allocate $500,000 to the municipalities in Massachusetts, but for Boston and Plymouth County, as Boston and Plymouth County both applied separately for funding. Everybody else will be receiving CARES Act funding from the state on a formula basis based on population. So these funds are to carry us through the remainder of FY '20 and FY '21. The first round of applications is due June 5th. The second round will be sometime toward the end of fiscal '21. The funds are there for us. We do have to explain to the state, and it's heavy on documentation, what we've used the funds for, what we're seeking reimbursement for. And I can turn it to Ed to just explain some of the items that we can seek reimbursement, but I would also tell you that because this was just announced by the state last week and because we have such deadlines, it was brought to our attention that we can hire a consultant to help us pull all these documents together and make sure we get our application in in time and we don't leave any money on the table. So we have hired a consultant. It is an eligible expenditure under the CARES Act, so we will be reimbursed for it, and we've hired Strategic Municipal Solutions to work with us, and I know another, several communities in our area have also hired them. So, Ed, can you explain just a little bit about the difference between FEMA and the CARES Act and what's eligible and what we're going to be doing?
Sure. Thank you, Julian. To the chair. This all came together last Thursday, and the window was very tight. This application is due to the state on June 5th. This would be the first round of two potential rounds. Ultimately, we're hoping maybe through a vote from the federal government that they would allow for the use of this money to also be included for any local loss of revenue. There's a good potential that may happen. Quite honestly, that would make our lives somewhat easier and not have to assemble all this documentation first to determine its eligibility under several pots of money that are available for COVID-19. So this CARES Act is a distribution, two-year distribution, as Julie said, of $150 million that was originally released by the federal government. It can only currently be used for COVID-19 expenditures, and that becomes part of the challenge. What is a COVID-19 expenditure? So we know PPE and some of the cleaning supplies are eligible, but there are some gray areas, and we're looking for some guidance, and it's going to be, it's something we kind of have to sift through and apply for. We may not know its termination until after the application is in, but we're going to put it in anyway. So we had an emergency department head's meeting last week, a go-to meeting, to give them some directive to submit to us by today, by the close of today, any and all documentation that has been spent today on COVID-19, as well as any anticipated or projected expenses that need to be, that need to be spent to be compliant with the guidance that we're getting from the state in opening up our public building. And certainly, a lot of that is not known yet. So we're going to have to make some estimates and try to determine what we believe is eligible, what we need to do as an organization in order to make our building safe, not only for our employees, but for the general public as well. There's also money that we received, two grant amounts, $12,000 each, a total of 24 through CMRPC for PPE, for other expenditures that may be required for nursing services or for general cleaning supplies as well. There's also a $32,000 regional grant that we're part of that has been distributed for COVID-19 expenditures, as well as FEMA money at a 75% reimbursement rate. The board threw an emergency declaration through the town manager that the state allowed. We also have a Chapter 44, Section 31 account for any emergency services or goods that need to be purchased strictly COVID-19 related that have not been appropriated for during the course of the year. And then we have the CARES Act money. So I recently had a conversation with our vendor this afternoon. I'm going to touch base with them again tomorrow, send over the information that we have assembled so far, and start preparing our filing for that application on June 5th. So, clock is ticking. We don't have much time. It is a priority. We made it a priority, and we will make that filing on time. We don't know what the amount is at this point in time, but whatever doesn't make the first round, we can always put it for the second round. So that's some of the details that we have to juggle for the next week and a half in order to make that filing.
Is there anything else? If not, I'm going to open it up to board members with any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Hearing none. Oh, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. You know, I know I speak up a lot about these issues, but we are in completely uncharted waters, and I just want to congratulate the town manager, the assistant town manager, and the department heads on the decisions that they've made. You know, they're dealing with unions, they're dealing with town employees, they're dealing with the governor's office on a daily basis. It's, the decisions they are making are not easy, and all these decisions have a financial impact. The financial impact may be reimbursed through these funds, and I thank them both for the work they're doing and the potential funds that we may receive back for this crisis.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich.
Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none. We have nothing left on the agenda other than adjournment, but last, last opportunity, if town administration has any, anything else to share at this time?
I think we're all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And any last board member comment? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion, do we need to accept the minutes, the revised minutes that are in our attachment?
We didn't have any minutes. I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Well, when I printed the, when I printed the agenda here, there is revised minutes from Tuesday, May 20th. I'm sorry, wait a second. Oh, I'm sorry. Take that back. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second, but I do have a question.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Before we adjourn, I did notice in our packet that there was a recommended vote on the designee for the report to the attorney general. Was my motion adequate to cover that, or do I need to read, change my motion and read the language?
Mrs. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the vote was adequate. You voted to designate an individual to file with the attorney general as necessary, so I think that's fine.
Thank you.
There is a motion, there is a second. Seeing no hands, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great week ahead.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night.